Well, good afternoon and sorry for the loud voice there. Good afternoon and welcome to the Oklahoma City Planning Commission. Before we begin, I'm just gonna do just a couple of housekeeping reminders first. If you are wishing to address the commission, if you're wishing to speak, we have forms that look just like these right on the desk outside of the chambers. Please fill that out and submit that to one of these gentlemen up here at the desk and we'll be able to call on you to address the commission. If you are an applicant, we will call on you without you needing to fill on, fill out the form. Please take the time to silence any cell phones. Please remember that if you have any, if you are asked to address the commission, that you have, please limit your comments to five minutes. We do ask that you prevent, stop any repetitious comments. So if your neighbor has brought up a concern about drainage, for example, there's no need for you to bring it up too. We understand that that's an issue that's shared. Also, it doesn't look like we have very many groups here, but if you do have a group, we do ask that you appoint one spokesperson to address the commission for all of the concerns that you may have. We do want to remind everyone about the golden rule and ask that everyone please respect the process and the commission and each other. So with that being said, we're ready to move forward with our agenda and to receive the minutes from the April 27th meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to receive the minutes of the April 27th meeting?
Commissioner Claire has moved to receive the minutes from the April 27th meeting.
Second.
That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Noble. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're now in line for continuance requests and we'll begin with uncontested continuance requests.
We have several requests today. Item 14 is SPOD 1523 deferred to May 25th. Item 15, SPOD 1524 deferred to May 25th. Item 16, SPOD 1526 deferred to May 25th. Item 17, case SPOD 1527 deferred to May 25th. Item 18, case PUD 1949 deferred to May 25th. Item 19, case PUD 1950 deferred to May 25th. Item 20, CPA 23-02 deferred to May 25th. Item 21 was originally requested to defer to May 25th, but it, we have since received a request to withdraw, so it'll appear under our new requests in a minute here. Item 22, case PUD 1922 deferred to June 22nd. Item 23, case C7524 deferred to June 22nd. Item 24, case C7527 deferred to June 22nd. Item 25, SPOD 1492 deferred to July 27th. Item 26, PC 10880 has been withdrawn.
Thank you. Is there anyone here wishing to be heard on any of those items? All right, I think we're ready.
All right, seeing none, I will move to approve the uncontested continuance request as read.
Commissioner Claire has moved to grant the uncontested continuance requests. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Gauvain. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're now in line for new requests.
Item 13, SP 572 has been withdrawn and item 21, case C7530 has been withdrawn.
Thank you. Do we have to accept the withdrawal?
Yes, sorry, request, request to withdraw.
Great. The, looking for a motion.
I'll move to approve the new requests as, as read.
The Commissioner Claire moves to accept the request for withdrawal. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Gauvain. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're now in line for the consent docket.
Item 1 is case C7554, final plat of Avalon at Oklahoma City, located north of northeast 23rd Street and east of North Kelly Avenue. And item 2 is case C7555, final plat of Cypress Forest, located east of South Hiwase Road and south of southeast 74th Street.
Is there anyone here wishing to be heard on either one of those items?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve the consent docket as read.
Commissioner Claire moves to accept, to approve the consent docket as read. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner La Forge. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're now in line for items requiring separate vote. We'll begin with item 3.
This is case ED 236, application to dedicate an extension of Mid America Boulevard to the public, located south of east I-240 Service Road and west of South Air Depot Boulevard.
Good afternoon, Mark Grubbs, 1800 South Air Road on behalf of the applicant. This was continued from the last planning commission meeting for, for time for me to discuss the clarified TE 3, that we would actually build a turnaround to public standards and dedicate that as well. We agree to that TE and would ask for your approval. So we agree to TE 1, 2, and 3 and would ask for your approval.
Excellent. I'm gonna ask Barry from, Barry Lodge from Public Works to...
Barry Lodge, Oklahoma City Public Works, did speak with Mark prior to the meeting. We will go ahead and vote on this today through this commission, but it will not be presented to council for approval until after the improvements are done. And then, conversation with Mark earlier, they will also correct the easement exhibit and legal description to include the turnaround cul-de-sac at the end prior to that delivery to council.
But there are no additional steps that we need to take with this item in order for us to, for the process to proceed as you just described?
That's correct.
Great. And are there any other questions, comments from commissioners?
Nothing other than, we have a TE 1 and a TE 2.
I'm not sure the wording of the TE 3, I know you've already talked about it, but did we get that in, read into the record?
On the, did you see it on the other side? Sorry.
Yep. I got TE 3. We're good.
Any other questions?
By itself.
Think we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to recommend approval of item ED 236.
Commissioner Claire moves to recommend approval of ED 236 to city council. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Noble. Please cast your votes.
Subject to the technical evaluation.
Subject to the technical evaluations. And the motion passes. We're now in line for item 4.
Item 4 is case CE 1098, application to close north-south alley of Black in block 101 of Fourth Stockyards Edition, located east of South Agnew Avenue and north of southwest 9th Street.
Is, oh, please proceed.
Good afternoon, Caitlin Turner, 522 Call Cord Drive here on behalf of the applicant. So this is to close that alley on the property on Agnew and 9th. It's worth noting that that alley in particular has been closed off to any access for the past 30 years, so closing it now is not going to affect any connectivity that could be possible there. Also worth noting that you can see there that the east-west alley has also been closed previously, so we're just kind of cleaning this area, wanting to do some commercial development. It was heard yesterday at the Stockyard City Urban Design Commission and it was recommended for approval. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. There is one TE that we agree to.
Excellent. Commissioner Gauvain, this is in your ward?
Sure. Well, seeing as, I don't have any questions or concerns with this one. I think it's been stated accurately and same condition that you have for at least two blocks to the south, so I'm in support of the application.
Any other questions, comments from commissioners? We have no one signed up to speak.
In that case, I move approval of CE 1098.
Commissioner Gauvain moves to recommend approval of CE 1098 to city council. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner La Forge. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes. We're now in line for item 5.
Item 5 is case CE 1100, application to close the west 25 feet of a 42-foot wide north-south easement located north of northwest 50th Street and west of North May Avenue.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Cord Drive here on behalf of the applicant. We continue this item from the last hearing to be able to meet with staff and discuss what our plans are. If you're familiar with the area, there was a former church on the site. The developer of the shopping center to the south and to the southeast also acquired this and will redevelop that with commercial and office and other, other things that we believe are trending in the right direction on May Avenue. So after the, the meeting, we were able to show that I think the city still has sufficient right-of-way even in the event of the closing, which is why they now recommend approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This is in Ward 2 and we are still, we are missing Commissioner Powers. Any questions from other commissioners?
No, I mean, I think in our discussions with staff, there's no concerns there. They still have adequate right-of-way for any future improvements, so no concerns.
I was wondering, what is the, what's the plan for the whole?
Mixed use.
Okay.
Commercial, mostly.
Cool.
If you, if you've driven in the area and seen all the work they've done on the, what was the Mayfair Shopping Center, it's been pretty extensive, so this will just be a continuation of that.
Cool. Starting to look really good over there. I think, we have no one signed up to speak. I think we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Powers' absence, I'll move to recommend approval to city council of item CE 1100.
Commissioner Claire moves to recommend approval of CE 1100 to city council. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Gauvain. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're now in line for item 6.
Item 6 is case PC 10877, application to rezone 10609 Payne Road from AA to RA2.
Hello, I'm Joe Weaver. I'm the representative for the applicant, Janet Gausman. This is a five-acre tract of property that's been in the Gausman Family Trust for years. There is a, one house located on this five-acre tract that was completed back in 1978. The owner of that house was the father, built another house for his mother next door in 1990. So what we have now, this is due to the deaths in the trust and now we have, my, my client and her brother own one house, her daughter owns the other house. We're just here today to try and get that rezoned so that we can get, split the property into 2.5 acre tracts each, basically formalize the way things have existed for 33 years.
Excellent. We do not have a commissioner for Ward 3. Are there any questions from commissioners? And we have no one signed up to speak. I'm, I'm in support of this. It's logical to me. Yeah.
All right. I'll make, I'll move to recommend approval of item PC 10877.
Commissioner Claire moves to recommend approval of PC 10877 to city council. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner La Forge. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're now in line for item 7.
This is case PUD 1942, application to rezone 11109 Northwestern Avenue from R1.
Hello, Dakota Desai, 100 Northeast 5th Street on behalf of the applicant. This was continued from one of the April Planning Commission meetings in order to hold a public meeting and revise the site plan. So we held a public meeting on May 2nd. We had about seven or so people. Commissioner Powers came and I've discussed the application with her a little bit. We, prior to the public meeting, did revise the site plan to push back from the western property line so that we meet the 75-foot setback requirement for the heights of the building. There were different options given and suggestions made by residents at the meeting. However, after looking at the site plan, they, it was impossible to change the orientation of the buildings on the end and also meet the height requirement that is in R4. So we kept the things, or we kept the orientation of the buildings as they are, but met the setback requirement off of the west property line and asked, or we put in the MDS that we would provide, an eight-foot fence and ornamental trees there. And then there was one TE that we agree to.
Okay, so, so it already has, those revisions regarding the fence have already been made?
Yes.
And this is in my ward, so I wanted to just make a few comments, because that was my concern, was the resolution from the community meeting. I also know that we do have a resident landscape architect on this commission, so I was going to ask about the sufficiency of the landscape requirement before we hear from our neighbors as well.
Well, I'm not sure, it's not, I can't read the dimension on the site plan, but on the west side, you've got the eight-foot fence and then you've got a small landscape strip. I'm presuming it's four, five feet, and then you've got parking.
I think it's 10 feet. Not entirely sure.
It's, that's not, it's, I mean, and I know this is just a picture, but that's not what's represented on the site plan. If you've got a 20-foot parking space, that's not half of the parking space.
In, in 9.2 on page 2, it says a minimum, a minimum five-foot landscape buffer.
So, so when I've got a new, this is a different exhibit than what's in our packet too here on the...
There's two, there's two side fences in the packet, the original and the revised.
Okay.
So the very last page.
Got it. So just a couple of things, the eight-foot fence, that is, that's great. The ornamental trees aren't, with an eight-foot fence, the ornamental trees aren't gonna do anything, because that's like your crape myrtles, your vitex, those are only gonna get 10, 12 feet. I think the big concern of the neighbors was those second stories looking down, and so I really think there needs to be, in my opinion, a 10-foot landscape buffer, minimum 10, that allows you to get a shade tree in there. Because those shade trees will go in at 10 or 12 feet and then they'll grow pretty quickly and get up to 20 within a couple of years. So then that begins to develop that, that screening from that second story.
Makes sense to me. Other thoughts? Is that something you can accommodate?
I believe so. We'll have to look at the, the spacing between the buildings to ensure that that 10-foot buffer is possible, but I would assume that it is. And then the shade trees, the only issue that was brought up at the public meeting, and this is a question for OG&E, but the OG&E just came in, I think, I don't, maybe the neighbor can speak to it, but OG&E came in and removed the trees along there because of the power line.
Oh, there's power lines running across that property line?
Yeah.
That's, and then that makes a difference. If there's power lines there.
Because it means we won't be able to put up more trees.
Yeah.
Why don't we hear from our neighbor first and, and hopefully that neighbor wouldn't mind making comment on the, on the discussion we just had. Benjamin Root?
Yes.
You have five minutes to address the commission. Please give us your name and address for the...
My name is Benjamin Root. My address is 11216 Queen Anne Avenue. This is literally in my backyard. The biggest concern we have is this is, we're moving from a low-density residential area to a high-density residential area. The surrounding area is low-density. It's a low-density neighborhood over there. Even the warehouses that were approved that are being built are relatively low-density. It's not like it's packed in like a, the PETA store places. It's, those are low-density for the neighborhood. And putting 300 people in that area, we're concerned about a, a stress on the surrounding utilities. Definitely the ingress and egress on western there, because it's currently not set up with a turn, turn lane or anything like that for that many cars to go in and out in that area. It's already a rather busy corner as it is. Granted, there are, there is, there was an existing apartment that was there when I moved there in 2008, but at the time, it was vacant. The entire apartment complex was vacant. We are concerned that if this is built and there is no, no one wanting to rent, then we end up with not only high-density apartment buildings in our backyard, but, you know, a blighted apartment building there as well that brings, you know, crime and other issues involved with that, with just general blighted apartments. Also, I'm not sure, as the landscape architect mentioned, concerning the size of the site, how you're gonna be able to fit all of that into the size of the site that's there.
So were you able to attend the community meeting?
I did attend, yes.
What are your thoughts on the adjustments that they've made so far?
I think it would be better to move the pool and the clubhouse to the back of the site if you're going to move it anywhere. If you're going to approve this, that's where I would put the pool and the clubhouse, not at the front of the site.
That, wouldn't that put it closer to you?
It would, but it would also take care of the height issue, probably some of the size issues as well for, whoops, excuse me, wouldn't have, you wouldn't have to move out so much. You could keep the five-foot buffer because the clubhouse is only one story tall.
I would be very concerned about noise and other interruptions.
Well, and I, I've, I've worked on many multifamily communities and that's just not how they work. Their offices, their, their leasing agents, all that are upfront so they can monitor who's coming and going into the site. They don't want to bring people who aren't residents, potential residents, all the way through the site. They wanna, they wanna capture them out front. So, so I would say 99% of those amenities, the pool, the leasing offices, gym, all that stuff is the first thing you come to when you enter a multifamily site.
And the, as he, as was said, the trees, it's just not gonna, it, we have a, the utilities there, that's just one line there and that serves that whole street.
Gotcha.
And that's, if those go out, that whole street goes out.
So tell me this, if you know, and it's okay if you don't. I'm just curious. Do the power lines, I'm assuming they run adjacent to your back fence?
Yes.
Is there enough room with the 10 feet potentially for us, if the trees get pushed to the furthest east of that landscape buffer? Is it possible?
No, there, you, you really can't have those trees within, you know, 10 feet would not be enough if that's a, if the power lines run basically on the property line, on the fence line. Now, if it, if you look at this exhibit, it looks like that buffer is drawn closer to 20 feet. It's about the length of a parking space. If you were to put those trees right off the back of the curb, roughly 15 feet, and you picked the right tree that more grows more upright and not spreading, you could still achieve that if you, if that's, buffer's 18 to 20 feet.
Okay.
And the city has a list of recommended species within, if it's within the easement, don't, don't they have a certain guidelines on what you can plant?
They do, and basically you're gonna be limited to ornamental flowering trees that are only gonna get 10 or 12 feet and those, I mean, those aren't gonna do anything with an eight-foot fence. They're not gonna provide any screening for that, for the neighbors. The neighbors won't even see them. They'll see the tops of them over the eight-foot fence and that's about it.
Just to offer, the current setbacks is 75 feet too, right?
From the building, yeah.
From the building, so second-story windows, 75 foot with an eight-foot fence, they're gonna see your rooftop.
Now, the, now, now the other thing to do would be go ahead and allow, since they've got an eight-foot fence, go ahead and allow them to push the parking and the drive within five feet of the property line, create more landscape room in front of the building, on the building side, and plant your shade trees there.
Thoughts on that from the developer and neighbor? What do you think?
Well, then that would create more car noise, you know, right there.
It'd be a little closer to your backyard, yeah.
Definitely closer, yeah.
Still have a, a 10-foot buffer.
You're telling, 10-foot buffer?
Landscape buffer.
True. Well, no, you're saying eat into the buffer.
Yeah, I would say...
Well, if it's 18 feet, you could probably take it, even if it's a six-foot buffer.
Five-foot buffer or 10?
I would say five-foot buffer, because what that would allow you to do is you would have your eight-foot fence, you'd have five feet of room for like a hedge planting material, then you'd have your 20 feet of parking, your 24-foot of drive aisle, and then whatever space, hopefully you get about 20, 25 feet of space between the, the unit and the, and the drive aisle, and that's where you put your, your shade trees.
So then we'd need another, if we were to go that route, we'd need another TE requiring the planting of those trees on the easternmost side, I guess?
Of the building? West, yeah, eastern side of the drive, western side, basically between the drive and the building.
Okay. So just to clarify, and I'm sorry, we've just left you up here while we're having this whole discussion about how to resolve this issue. So to summarize your thoughts on this, you're concerned about the density?
Yes.
You're concerned about whether this, whether this is even gonna be occupied?
Yes.
And I'm assuming you're concerned about the, the, the building height and the ability for residents of this apartment complex to look down on your property?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to share with us?
I, I believe that's all.
Are you against this? So is your position that we should just not have this?
I would prefer to see something else. Currently, there is a big sign at the front of the property listing it as for sale. So I'm wondering, is this gonna be one of those things where, hey, I've changed it to now high-density, this is what you're being shown as the planning commission, and then you approve high-density, and then something else comes in with, you know, even less oversight? Let's put it that way.
Well, it would be, if we rezone it, it would be limited to just the uses that are spelled out in the application.
Sure, sure.
So...
But we wouldn't be having the discussion about the trees. We wouldn't have, having the discussion about setbacks necessarily, because it's already been zoned for that. So it would be perhaps, perchance easier to get it to...
You wouldn't, the, it's, looking at the application as it's written, in the circumstance that another buyer obtained this property, they would have to make it an apartment, it would have to be R4 or less.
Right, right.
So, but if, if they wanted to have another use, like a commercial, like if they want to build a store?
Right.
Then they'd have to come back to the commission.
Right. And, and it would be planned, but we could go, you know, I could build up my, building my two-story apartment within that five-foot buffer zone there and, because it's already been planned for that. We've got the, we've got the multi-use, high-density apartments there and we don't have to worry about, I've, I've got the, the okay for the, the plan. It's, it's now, now used for high-density and I can put it whenever I want there, as long as it's, you know, within those parameters.
Right.
One thing I would add to that is there is, it is stated in the materials that Exhibit D depicts the proposed building elevations?
That.
And all building permits in the PUD shall comply with said exhibit. So they're, they're, there's, I believe they're bound to that.
So even if another person bought it, they'd have to comply with those same requirements?
Okay.
Because we're putting the, all these requirements in the ordinance, so...
Okay.
They'd have to do all of this.
All right.
Anything else for us?
No, I think that's it. Thank you.
I just have one quick question, because we had a site very similar to this in my ward, probably a year ago, multifamily, and ended up not going forward, and they developed it as a storage facility. And I see this site... And I see this site being almost identical. It's on Western. It sets up great as multifamily and/or storage. So if you had to pick one or the other, what would you rather see?
I would rather see the storage. Now, at the planning, at the library, Mr. Brown said that he didn't see the money in the storage. He saw it more in the apartments, and I understand that, rent being what they are versus, uh, storage, but I would rather see the storage.
Understandable.
I mean, it's, some, you know, some people, yeah, would rather see it. Some people would rather have people in the neighborhood spending money on businesses and all that, so it, it, it all depends on the neighborhood.
Right, we, we have a rather, for being on Western, it is rather quiet, in spite of all the planning, or all of the building that's been going on past that. And I think 300 people would kind of make it less quiet.
That's a good point. Thank you, Mr. Root.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. I think a question about the appropriateness of this, I have a hard time seeing the difference between what's happening here and what's happening directly adjacent on University and Hefner with that apartment complex, as far as the compatibility. It's a hodgepodge of, of apartment complexes and single-family homes. I do appreciate the fact that, for the most part though, I know it is single-family homes. But as far as the initial test of whether this is appropriate, in my opinion, it, it is. So then the next question in, in my analysis is, how do we mitigate any harm to the neighborhood directly next to this? And so, for me, it's, I think, is the fence high enough, or the shade trees tall enough, or both, in order to prevent, to protect your privacy if you are adjacent? Can we protect you from light? Can we protect you from noise that the apartment complex would generate? And so, based on the analysis that I'm seeing right here, it sounds like we've, we've pushed pretty far in being able to keep somebody who's at the top floor of this apartment complex from being able to look down on your property to the neighbors that are already there with the eight-foot fence, and if we follow the suggestion that was made by Commissioner Claire as far as the, the shade trees, it seems like appropriate coverage at this point. Thoughts?
Yeah, seems like it to me, what you just said. The eight-foot fence seems the most important. It's the site. I don't know if the developer has a better map than, or a diagram than I do, but 75 feet away from the top window and an eight-foot fence, if you showed me that, I mean, I think 75 foot away has got to make a big difference as far as how you can see. It's not from three stories, it's only from two stories. Do you have the diagram and the map and know what that looks like better than, I think it's that, and you cannot see down in the backyard?
Right, I, I don't have one, but we have basically drawn a very crude one like you just drew. So, the only consideration that I would make there is, obviously, you're not looking down from the very, very top of the building. You're not looking down from 35 feet. You're looking down from-
25.
25.
Right, so rather than getting too much into making them put the trees on one spot or the other, yes, trees, I'll, part of the other commissioners, but I think 75 foot away and an eight-foot fence takes care of most of the visual, and shade trees, whatever y'all think is appropriate, is, is great.
I, I, I agree as well, and I, I like the suggestion, I, I think by, it's inherently not an issue based on the height and the limitations and the distance, but I like the suggestion of the trees because it would benefit your development more, in fact. And it also facilitates actual trees that can mature, not just great myrtles or something that you can plant under a power line. So I, I think it's a good suggestion if, if you're amenable to it.
I also think, and I, I left this out, it's, it's worth noting that even, even if we took no action and they develop this as a single-family residential, just neighbor, development of some kind, they can still build to 35 feet. So, I mean, you'd, you'd still, at least with this development, we can take some action to mitigate and help protect your privacy, so.
I also meant to add that, I said the last time over here, that I think this is a perfect spot right on Western for apartments. If they want to put apartments there instead of storage, I'm fine with that. This is a good spot for some apartments, I think.
Christopher Pennington, any concerns about dumpster locations?
Yeah, how far away is that? Did we agree to the 50 feet?
I think those are around 100 feet, but we do have different drawings that place those even further away from that west property line if necessary.
How far can you go?
I think we had one that was, both of them were around in the middle of the property.
150 feet?
Well, I mean, my, my big thing is, I mean, we're, we're talking about residents, you know, neighbors, but also, I mean, as, as, we want to think about the residents of this development as well, and, you know, they're very, very close to several units. And, I don't know, I'm just, I'm concerned, I'm, I'm wondering if they don't better belong out on Western.
Oh, you're saying move the, move the dumpsters all the way that far?
Yeah. I, I, yeah, I mean, my recommendation would take a hard look at your dumpster placement because as they're shown now, they don't even work with the trash truck circulation. That's a dead end on the north as it's drawn, and so that means that the trash truck can't get in there, so he's not coming from the right direction on either of those, so.
So, we definitely want to put, excuse me, we definitely want to push the dumpsters as far away from the neighbors and, and Mr. Root as we can, so can we agree to, how about 150 feet?
We'll agree to that.
Okay. So that'd be another TE. In addition to the discussion that we had Commissioner Claire about requiring the shade trees on the Western side. Any further discussion? If not, I think we're ready for a motion, if, if someone can get all the changes down.
I think I can, I think I can take a run at it. I'll move to recommend approval of City Council, PUD 1942, subject to adding a technical evaluation one that would require a 10-foot landscape buffer on the Western boundary and placing shade trees on the Eastern boundary of the drive, Western facade of the Westernmost building. And then TE two, the dumpsters shall be located a minimum of 150 feet from residential lots uses.
And just for clarification, did, you, you were starting your list with TE two? Because there is TE one.
Oh, yes, sorry.
We're keeping TE one and adding those two.
We added two and three.
Excellent. Anything else on, on that?
Just pointing for clarification, is it a 10-foot buffer on the west side, not a five?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, it could, yeah, it could go five. Five-foot buffer.
Because then we're putting the trees, yeah.
Yeah, that's going to give, five-foot buffer is going to give you an additional five feet over on the apartment building side.
The further shaded.
So it should be five-foot buffer, 18-foot parking, 24-foot drive aisle, and then you, whatever is the balance between the building and the edge of drive aisle.
Is that sufficient for the record? Yes, okay. Sarah, go ahead.
Sarah Welch Planning, can we please confirm on TE number three, you mean 150 feet from the west side?
Western.
Western residential uses, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Do we need to read them one more time? Or we got it? Okay. The motion is to recommend approval of PUD 1942 to City Council, subject to the amended technical evaluations as read into the record. That motion's been sent to about Commissioner Gobin. Please cast your votes. The motion passes. I will encourage you, Mr. Root, though, to recognize, this is, we are making a recommendation to City Council, so in six weeks it will go to City Council. So this is not over. You will still have an opportunity to have any, any further objections you have heard, and so I would encourage you to, to also visit with Councilwoman Nice and reach out to her office as well, because it will be going to City Council, so I'm happy to help you with that process as well if you need anything. Thank you. We're now in line for item eight.
This is PUD 1947, application to rezone 5501 South Council Road from PUD 1211.
David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. This is an application that would allow some limited commercial and light industrial uses. If you're familiar with the area, it's kind of a central hub for large warehouse and, and shipping operations. To the east, I think, is the AWG Large Grocery Warehouse and Distribution Center. So what we've done is tried to limit the uses, understanding that there is a residential neighborhood to our west, and if you would look at it, you will see that we have gone ahead and added the provision of the 150-foot separation of any call box to the residential uses to the west. And with that, there are then no technical evaluations. We believe it's compatible and, and also respecting of what's happening to the west, but understanding that that area is really important for the city and all of the commerce that's happening along there, and especially now that the turnpike is fully extended all the way down to 152. It's really become a central hub. Happy to answer any questions.
This is in Ward Three, which we're lacking a commissioner. Any questions from commissioners at this point? We have several people signed up to speak, so we might want to-
Love to hear from them.
Do you want to hear from them first? Okay, please forgive me if I mispronounce anyone's names. We'll begin with Rain Wachel?
Wachtel.
Wachtel?
Yeah, a little, little difficult though.
Okay, I apologize for that. Please give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to address the commission.
Yeah, my name is Rain Wachtel. I live at 5705 Marblewood Drive. We bought the home about four years ago with the understanding that both properties to the south and to the east of us were commercial usage. Now, if you haven't been down there lately, you can notice that the traffic already on council, there's a big divided lane for the warehousing, for the trucks to, to get into the AWG. Now, I work at a distribution center. I've been in the distribution center for four years in the Marine Corps, six years since I've been out, so I understand the flow of traffic. But that intersection right there going up into the turnpike is completely congested in the evenings and early mornings, and my worry is with the development there is it going to make it even worse. When you get out in the morning, the whole turnpike entrance is lined with 12 trucks, minimum, taking their rest, right, their DOT regulated rest. And so my worry is the more flow you bring in, the more potential crime is possible with the overflow of those trucks, right, because you never know what you're going to bring in with stuff like that. One of my other concerns would be the noise issue with the hours of operation. If we're going to say it's a 24-hour operation like AWG is, that backs right up to my back porch, and when I'm standing on my back porch, I can already see over my fence, so the lighting and the noise is going to be right at my back door, and with having two little kids and they're three-years-old, doesn't really sit easy with me. You know how it is already, trying to get two, three-year-olds to go to bed and stay asleep, right there. I like to have a good night's sleep, so I, I'm just worried about the noise. Also worried about with the fence height that we have of six-foot, and with the other things I've addressed, is there any possibility for a landscaping in between the parking lot where the trucks will be to mitigate the noise coming into our properties?
Those are all excellent points. Any questions from commissioners, from Mr. Wachtel?
Wachtel.
Wachtel, got it. Thank you so much. Next we have Evelyn Alonso.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
My name is Evelyn Alonso. I live at 5814 Marblewood Drive. My home is actually right, that's right on that line. My backyard looks straight into what would be that development. And I want to echo the, the noise level, but as well the, the lights at night. We already see those two other warehouses. There's been, those big 18-wheeler trucks have parked within our community before, and, you know, with them parked there, it makes it difficult for our school buses to get by. Right in that first loop is where our first, one of the stops is for the Western Heights Public Schools, and they'd have had difficulty with excessive parking there, along with the, the updated and straight line of the streets that has also increased traffic, not only for people that work there, but as well as racing, and in addition, adding, you know, 18-wheelers to that would be a lot more traffic, you know, even getting into our neighborhood. Looking right outside, there's a natural dip at the end of our fence, so even with it being a standard fence, it dips down, so we can actually see more. Those fluorescent lights leak right into my backyard, and, you know, I do have two children, actually, three-in-one, and so, you know, it's hard to get them to sleep. Our window's faced that way, and adding more fluorescent lights would make it extremely difficult, just even arguing, hey, it's nighttime, and so, it, we also worry about the safety issue. If there are, if there's more movement back there, that could potentially become a safety issue for us as well, with our daughters being back there. If it's a natural movement all day and all night, with a typical distribution center, it could potentially be more dangerous for us just to be outside in our backyard.
Thank you. Anything from commissioners? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next we have Rob Nichols.
Hi, my name's Rob Nichols, 5902 Marblewood Drive, and I'd like to just reiterate our concerns. I'm on the Homers Association Board for the Clearwater Neighborhood to the west, and I know, I guess today I can only represent myself, but there's been a lot of talk and concern above the, amongst the 144 residents of the Clearwater Neighborhood about all the stuff that has, you've heard about already, that Rain talked about, with the excess vehicle usage getting on and off the turnpike, the tractor-trailers in the, the evenings, and at particular points in the day, we've had a couple tractor-trailers accidentally turn into the Clearwater Neighborhood and put huge ruts into the common areas and grass and hopping their flatbeds over the, the medians by accident, trying to get out of the neighborhood. And with the change to industrial, that would likely only increase, as well as the, the light and noise pollution, especially for those of us who have property on Marblewood Drive, which is immediately adjacent to the proposed commercial area or industrial area. And also, when we purchased the home from Home Creations, the understanding from us and all the other residents too, was that the, that area would eventually be developed as C3 commercial use, and so rezoning to industrial was not something that was in the cards at the time for, for those of us in the neighborhood. So, those are just some extra concerns that I wanted to voice.
But you weren't concerned about the C3, just to be clear?
About what?
You were not concerned about the C3?
Well, residential, we thought would have been better, but knowing C3 was a possibility and on the board, thought mixed commercial, retail use would be one thing. At least it'd probably be the, hours of the day would be more limiting to industrial, which I don't know if there would be restrictions on hours of operation with industrial, but we-
We can evaluate that for sure.
Okay.
As far as the difference between C3 and this proposal, they did eliminate a significant number of industrial uses, and my understanding, unless staff can correct me, is that any of the industrial uses would actually be required to be indoors because it's I-1. So, as far as, I know there's a general concern about industrial uses, and I might not be making you feel any better, so I apologize, but at the very least, they all have to be, those operations do have to be indoors, and they've eliminated, have you seen the full list?
No, I have not.
Okay, we might want to, can we share that with him? Can I give you mine? But I think you should take a look at the uses that are actually on here.
Okay.
To see the difference between what, what's being proposed and the existing C3, because it's not very different.
Okay, well, that-
I know, I know that's still, it's still scary. That's why I'm saying I want to show you the list, but-
And that'd probably ease some concerns about hours of operation, I can see. I, I don't know if it would for the, the increased traffic count.
Yeah, definitely. That's, that's totally, totally different issue. So, okay. Anything else from commissioners? We, I think we have one. Nope, that was it. That was the last speaker. Thank you. You want to, you want to respond?
If I could, real briefly. So, the current PUD is PUD 1211, and it's, it's one of the older PUDs that actually says-
And it's, it's one of the older PUDs that actually says Use and Development Regulations of C3, except it limits, and it only takes out about eight uses. So I think there's 63 uses permitted in C3, it only takes out eight. What we have done is, of course, limited. We're only adding one use. We're taking out more uses that would be allowed today, and we're simply adding the industrial light, which as staff indicated, all happens within closed doors. So it's not an exterior use. We're simply adding one use, but taking more uses out. And part of staff's red lines asked us to commit to enhanced landscaping where we are adjacent to the, folks to the west, which we agreed to. So what you see in your landscaping section is a landscape buffer along the western boundary. We're adjacent to residential development consisting of two-inch caliber trees every 30 feet. So I think they're getting more protections than what the current PUD would afford them, given that from the outside, there will be no change from what anybody from the public would know what is happening there. Everything is contained indoors.
Could you address the hours of operation and the traffic flow? Because I think it does make sense. They've had significant concerns with those trucks going, getting into their neighborhood and trying to turn around.
Yeah, so we have a long stretch of frontage. We think we have designed it in a way that allows for all queuing and movement on-site. Hours of operation is just something that we can't agree to. It is very hard for any developer to agree to hours of operation because, of course, the business world just works when they work. And if we think about what PUDs are for, I don't know how that's really enforced. I don't know how a code enforcement person's going to be there and say that, oh, I see a light on. Therefore, they're violating their PUD. Council Road is a major hub. We have tried, I think, to limit what we do on-site. And I think it's a nice transition from what exists to the east in a, I think it's the high industrial designation on the comp plan. And this is really a commercial development that allows that one use being light industrial and adding that tree buffer. So agreeing to hours of operation is just not something we can do.
What, what, what kind of truck traffic, what kind of trucks would be using this apparently 24 hours a day?
Well, I don't know that it's 24 hours a day, but...
But it could be, if there's no limits on hours of operation, we have to assume 24 hours a day?
Well, I guess if we make that assumption on every single case, but it's C3 right now with almost no limitations. Do you want to speak to the type of truck traffic? But assuming that it's 24 hours a day, I guess we'd have to assume that every application that ever comes before you is 24 hours a day. I mean, I don't think that's a fair assumption that this is just, we know it's going to be 24 hours a day because we don't limit ourselves. I can't think of a single time in the 15 years I've been appearing here that I've ever limited the hours of operation.
I'm Edgar Brown, the managing member of the applicant, South Meridian Land LLC. With regards to hours of operation, no different than what is currently allowed, which is there are no restrictions. The type of vehicles can be anything from passenger vehicles to box trucks to 53-foot over-the-road trailers. Exact same conditions as what is currently allowed. We're not proposing to build a physical structure any differently than what is currently allowed. We're just looking to enhance the interior allowable operations through the light industrial. And in exchange for that, the two-inch caliber trees every 30 feet along the western boundary, the current PUD as well as the proposed SPUD does call for an eight-foot privacy fence. No different in either one along our western boundary. So you get not only the privacy fence, but you get the enhancement of two-inch caliber trees every 30 feet. Happy to take any questions.
Well, one quick question. Is that, that applies to the full western boundary of the site?
I think it currently says against any residential in the vast, except for maybe the top 50 feet is. But we can agree to the whole western boundary, that's not an issue.
And it does, and just to be clear on the height of the screening, it does say that it can be no less than six feet and no greater than eight. Can you commit to eight?
We can commit to eight.
Cool.
And we can commit that it goes, the trees go the entire length.
Is the intent of that whole west side is loading docks, bays, that function?
The intent is that the building, as indicated in the mock-up here, the building is on the eastern half of the property. And so you end up with roughly 140-foot-deep truckport. And so it's concrete. So the physical structure is 140-ish feet from the property line. Property line ends up with, like I said, the tree barrier as well as the physical eight-foot fence. And then on the western side of that, before you get to the residential property line, there is the drainage ditch plus the sanitary sewer easement. So it's not as though that, that eight-foot fence is on a mutual property line.
I just got to say, as someone that's backed up to, that's lived temporarily six months behind the post office, the central post office, that mail truck backs up every morning at 4:30, and that's one, one or two box trucks. And that beeping of that backup is, wakes you up every time. If you've got box trucks, if you've got WB53s, semi-trucks, tractor-trailers, et cetera, and there's a lot of real estate there for loading bays, this is, that's just a deal breaker for me next to residential.
But that's allowed right now.
That's what I was about to say.
The wholesaling storage and distribution use, we're not changing that. Nothing about what we're changing from the exterior happens because of this PUD. We're allowing an internal use that isn't allowed. The distribution use doesn't change, if you deny this. It's allowed today.
Yeah, technically, if we took no action, they could do all of this external, they could do all of this externally, except we wouldn't be able to impose the landscaping requirements that they, and the fencing requirement.
Yeah, I mean, so I think they'd get a better version of what could be there with the PUD.
So let me jump in and say, so the reason I'd be in favor of it is only because of that threat that you can do something bad that we don't want you to do, so, okay?
Yeah.
With that context, nonetheless, what about instead the building being on the west and the trucks coming in from the east? I'm assuming that's a no, but I'd be an easy yes on a lot of things if the trucks were going to be on the other side of the building. Bays on the street side instead of the bays right next to the houses?
Anything's possible. It is, the topography and the drainage works more favorably when the building is up front. You get a higher value development if it is a rear loader with, with all of the parking and the storefronts up on council. And the other is, I mean, you know, then you're, you don't have a 35-foot-tall building literally five feet off of your property line. I mean, this is, we've pushed it, like I said, we've pushed it 150 feet off the property line plus the drainage easement, which is, I don't know, 10, 15 feet.
And when this was originally approved, the PUD was a large PUD that encompassed both the residential development you see and this piece. So I know oftentimes, Plankton was concerned about what the neighbors knew or didn't know at the time that they, you know, acquired their house. The PUD that covers this allows everything we're asking for, except for that one internal use.
Yeah, and I was glad to hear that at least one neighbor said they were told it was commercial zone. That's good. What about a masonry fence? I know it'd be a lot more expensive, but I figured with the bays switched to the other side, there's a lot of other issues with that. But what about a masonry fence? That would help on light and sound and a lot of things.
Yeah, currently, it calls for masonry or wood with masonry pilings every, you know, to break it up. I don't remember what the actual dimensions are.
20 foot.
As you, as you said, it's...
Brick columns every 20 feet.
It's just going to increase the cost, but...
The full thing being eight-foot would be a great improvement, the full masonry, the whole eight feet all the way across would be much improved to what the situation is they have now that you could already do.
And, but, and you do realize that that is not a common border with the residential. So it's, they still are going to have their six- or eight-foot wood fence or whatever fence they have.
Right.
And then, I mean, it's, it's, it's all a matter of finances.
Those are really, you see those adjacent to highways where there's residential, not developments like this next to residential. We think we accomplished what you're trying to, to get with that, with the eight-foot fence and the trees.
I just, I agree with Rusty on that. I think a masonry fence, light from the headlights can't get through it, and it will do some for the noise.
If that's the requirement, then we'll figure out how to abide.
That's, that's what I need to vote in favor.
I'd be on board with that too. Wouldn't need to ask anything else. It's, it's a tremendous improvement from what they could do, and then giving you your light industrial.
I think it's six-foot, I mean, the cost of masonry is going to be excessive. So if we're going to agree to that, I would at least ask to do, have it six feet. It's still going to stop the headlights if that, you know, is the concern. I mean, you, you get into a point where this is, I think, an important piece of the city. Having an eight-foot concrete wall, I don't think is the thing that is needed here. If it doesn't pencil, it ends up being worse for the neighbors because of how it's already zoned.
Thoughts from staff? Any suggestions? It's okay if not?
Yeah, it's, it's a tough one. I mean, I, the eight-foot is, does it come down to, is it mostly light or noise that we're concerned about? I was looking through the, the lighting code. It does say that the light should be, well, I can read it. It does say that it should be directed away. Outdoor lighting should be arranged and installed in minimized glare on adjacent properties and streets. Glare should be minimized by any combination of the following: fully shielded fixtures, directional control, fixture location, fixture height, or fixture aim. It limits the number of lumens, or foot candles, I mean, which we discussed last time, which should be about the same as it was, would be for a billboard. So that's what they're, they're required to do right now as far as lighting goes.
I think on the lights, my concern is the headlights off the trucks bouncing through the little tiny slits.
I don't, I don't know what the, is the, is the site is fairly flat? So we're not going to have trucks that are up above and shining lights down?
The site is fairly flat, yes.
Six-foot tall with a mason cap, seven feet?
Well, but one of the neighbors also mentioned that, that their property is actually, is actually a higher grade. So I think we want the eight feet.
We would respectfully decline an eight-foot-tall fence.
Then does that mean you, I mean, well, we're...
Four feet of masonry, 20-foot masonry pilasters, and a four-foot wood topper. If we're going to, if we're going to get into that, nobody, I mean, that, that...
Yeah.
We could agree to that.
But the, the wood doesn't do anything for sound. I mean, that sound still goes, it goes through the wood. It goes through the very minute space between the pickets. It's a, I mean, it's a reason they do sound walls on interstate.
This isn't an interstate. I mean, you've got, I mean...
I know, but you're going to have a bunch of trucks back here backing up, idling.
A six-foot masonry would help with the, with the light. It would prevent light. Sound attenuation is going to, we could require more landscaping potentially. They're, they're, they're doing the trees. We could require additional landscaping to mitigate sound. I mean, the standard kind of low shrub, median-sized shrub gets 10, 12 feet high. Helps mitigate sound and, and light.
We like the Dan Govine-designed fence.
Charge them for it. Well, we have to be unanimous, otherwise this is going to be continued, so...
We would, well, we'll see where the vote happens.
Are we amenable to Dan's, Commissioner Govine's suggested way of, at least, we'd solve one problem or minimize one problem with the light?
Is there that in addition to improve in a slightly...
More dense landscape requirement? Would that also help mitigate sound?
The landscape helps, the shade trees help, but, I mean...
If you're, if you're, if you're good with a six-foot-tall fence, six-foot-tall masonry fence, all the way across?
We like the Dan fence.
I was going for a four, but I'm good with either.
The cost difference between a six and a eight is minimal. I mean, your cost is already being there.
It's, I mean, it's materials only. Because, I mean, your cost is in your footing and all that, so...
With all respect, there's currently no masonry fence requirement, and the vehicular traffic portion of the equation doesn't change. Because if you have a warehousing operation that's running packages 24 hours a day, that's currently allowed. So I'm better off going a different direction. What we are trying to offer is some middle ground to provide greater shade trees, greater landscape barriers in exchange for an additional internal use. It's not external, it's internal. The external portion of this project is currently allowed in the PUD, would currently, or would be allowed in the proposed SPUD.
What do you guys think?
We have to be unanimous, so are we still along the lines of, of the compromised position of four-foot masonry, then four-foot of, of the wood fence? It looks like Commissioner Noble's saying no. No, I, no, I would, eight-foot masonry, if we can't get there, six-foot with landscape. But that's, I mean, that's, that's as low as I go.
But you'd prefer...
We're our way commissioners then.
I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm, would be in favor of that too. But you prefer six-foot masonry, even without anything else?
You might as well just build a four-foot wall then if you're going to do your wood. Because, I mean, my thing is sound. And the wood, the wood fence isn't going to... Commissioner Ford?
Fair. What was the question?
David, Commissioner Clare's last suggestion, six-foot masonry.
No, thank you.
They're saying no. Six-foot, all masonry?
No. Unfortunately, we can't agree to that.
Unfortunately, I can't support the application. Well, why don't we go ahead and put it in there, and then they can work it out with the city council?
Well, we'd rather you just recommend denial.
Okay.
I mean, we don't agree to that. And it's, I don't, I don't, we don't agree to it.
Okay. For the purposes of making sure that our neighbors are very clear about the action that we could be potentially taking, if, just because we recommend denial of this application does not mean that a development that has a, that is, that is laid out exactly like it is on this picture cannot be built. In fact, the developer can go do that right now. So I just want to be very clear with all the neighbors. Taking, denying this doesn't change the potentiality of the creation of that, nor does it change the possibility of there being truck traffic and the warehouse use happening behind your homes, unfortunately. So saying no does not mean that. And so I think we should, just so that everyone's clear, because the existing uses are already, go ahead, come to the microphone now.
Yeah, I'm on May. I get the costs on the masonry from their standpoint. Like, I've been in business 10 years, so I get it. My other suggestion would be, could there be a landscape and dirt buildup, almost like a mound, that would mitigate sound the same way masonry would, would limit their cost?
My, so I'll, I'll take a shot at that. In order to get a mound high enough, that requires a pretty good amount of width. And I just, I don't see that width being there. It would remove too much from the vehicular circulation. Who wants to make the motion and see where we are? I'll make a motion. Commissioner Clare? I'll move to recommend the city council denial of PUD 1947. Commissioner Clare moves to recommend denial... Commissioner Claire moves to recommend denial of PUD 1947 to city council? That motion's been seconded by Commissioner La Forge for clarification. To vote yes means you would like for the city council to, you're, means you are recommending that the city council say deny this application. Means you want them to say no to it. I know that's very confusing. You voting yes to encourage them to say no. But just want to be clear. Again, the motion by Commissioner Claire is to recommend denial of, of PUD 1947 to city council. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner La Forge. Please cast your votes. And the motion fails, so we need another motion, or else it's just continued.
Could we move this on to city council? I mean, our, our preference would be move it on to city council with no recommendation. The minutes were reflected was a motion to deny four to one.
But it failed. Yeah, so we need another motion.
I think we can do better than this. I, I mean, I know we've spent a bit of time here, but this feels like one we should be able to come to a reasonable solution on and.
I mean, to, to say yes to it is technically better than what they have right now.
Well, what I wanted to re, let's try, let's try this one more time, because you guys were up for four foot masonry fence with a four foot wood topper, including the, the pilasters. But you're not up for a six foot masonry fence full on. I mean, I'm not sure what the cost difference in those two would be, but it doesn't seem like it would be much. You got one trade versus, I mean, I don't, it's kind of, so is there any, do, I just wonder, is there a chance you want to think about that and?
Well, I think the eight foot is in a, the, the eight foot wood is an enhancement from what's there now. The landscaping is an enhancement from what is there now. And I just, I, I don't know. I mean, the, the cost of the masonry is a massive.
That's fair. It's, I mean, I accept your.
Those are very modest enhancements. What are you required to do now, six foot? So you're doing two extra feet and some trees. You're not offering us anything. What do you suggest that we approve here? And no, I'm not going to send the recommendation to the council with nothing. I'm not going to punt this just because you're wanting to.
That's fine.
Back us off. So what is it you guys are willing to do? That's it? Just an eight, two extra feet and some trees?
I'm, we're happy if it's five to nothing denial. We're not asking you to punt it, but.
Yeah, you did. Said you want us to just send it on?
Up or down, we just, we'd like to, to move on.
I, I, we'll potentially make a motion for an eight foot masonry fence with the trees. I'll propose that and we could approve that and send it on.
You, you can't force things on an applicant like that.
I was going to take another step with the motion to deny. I was, I was the dissenting vote, so I've changed, I'm, I'm willing to.
Well, technically, since we already voted once, do we need a motion to reconsider?
No, you needed no motion because that one failed.
Okay. So let's try this again.
All right, I'll move to recommend denial to city council of PUD 1211.
The motion from Commissioner Claire is to recommend denial of PUD 1947 to city council. I apologize. Buffering. Do I need to refresh?
I'm, I'm.
Is this like a revote? But we'll still have the first, first motion on the record, right? Okay. So the motion is to recommend denial of PUD 1947 to city council. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner La Forge. Please cast your votes. Okay, we'll need to do a voice vote. Commissioner Claire?
Yay.
Commissioner Govine?
Yay.
Commissioner Noble?
Aye.
Commissioner La Forge?
Aye.
I also vote aye. The motion is unanimous. We have recommended denial. We're now in line for item nine.
Item nine is case SPOD 1508, application to rezone 1,005 Northwest 44th Street from O2 to 1508.
Blaine Nice, seven, uh, 100 North Broadway, Suite 1700 for the applicant. This is an application for a spud. The property is currently zoned O2. The applicant intends to operate a grooming shop there in the existing building. This has been continued a couple times to have input from Commissioner Powers and she provided significant input in this. We met with the neighbors and Commissioner Powers has essentially agreed with everything in, in the, in the spud application and there's no TE, so we'd ask you for your recommendation for approval.
Thank you. And just for, for clarity on what was agreed to, what were the changes that have been made to this proposal from the time it was submitted, I guess, and where, where, what were the compromise points? Because I did, I was included on an email and I just want to clarify that the, the changes that were named in that email from Commissioner Powers are what was agreed to.
We restricted some uses, removed some uses. I think we had automotive use in there and we took that out and we also agreed to some, some masonry on the front of the building and some landscaping. So that's the main things, as I recall.
Okay, can, so that's been changed officially?
Yes. This, essentially, this, this spud document we have, um, as Commissioner Powers was intimately involved in it, so we, we agreed with all her input and her changes.
Has that been implemented in, are we aware of what all those changes are? That's, that's my issue, is wanting to confirm that what we approved today includes all of those changes that have been agreed to.
Uh, yes. Sarah Welch, Planning Department. When this first came in, it was, it, there was a, there was a lot of editing that was needed and, and applicant worked with Commissioner Powers to address uses, base district zone, I believe, architectural standards. And so what we have included in your packet today is what she's ultimately satisfied with.
Gotcha. Okay, that was my question.
She said it better than I did. I apologize.
Any questions from commissioners? I think we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to recommend approval to city council, SPOD 1508.
The motion is to recommend approval of SPOD 1508 to city council. Let's see if we have a second. Okay, I think we're having some, some buffering. I didn't have anybody signed up to speak, I believe. There was a protest letter. I don't know if that was, I'm sure was that neighbor.
He was at the meeting. The protest essentially had to do with what the existing use is, not what the proposed use is.
Gotcha.
He's unhappy with what's going on there now.
Well, that still does not resolve our technical, our issue with the, with being able to vote. Okay, so, once again, for the record, Commissioner Claire has moved to recommend approval of SPOD 1508 to city council. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Noble. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're now in line for item 10.
This is case SPOD 1515, application to rezone 1500 Northwest 16th Street from R1.
We're ready for you.
I apologize. Good afternoon. This is one we deferred a few times because, you know, with these infill lots, we've had some discussions on utilities and I think that's something that we don't really want to work out here. It's more of a utility department issue, so we deferred it because it was very similar to a different spud that I had and I just didn't want to waste your time, you know, working all that out, so.
We are very grateful.
And, and I think we've worked something out. I actually, I brought in Johnson Sisters as well to help with that discussion, since they do a lot of infill development as well. And so we've, we've worked out, really for this one, a, a 10 foot easement for the back to allow for the sewer lines. So really, the utilities are pretty sorted on this. There's a water line that goes north-south along College, so we don't have any issues hitting these houses with water. And I did reach out to Dan Govine about this one and there's a couple comments he had. One was in the, in the MDS, we had mentioned zero foot internal law lines. We're actually planning on three foot setbacks between all the houses, so we're happy to clarify that in the MDS to state that we actually do have three foot from property line to each house internally. And then the other item, there's a TE from the city for 18, 18 foot setback from the back of the sidewalk to the front of the garage so that you could park a car in front of the garage without impeding the sidewalk. And that is something that we agreed to as well. Commissioner Govine had mentioned that the, or pointed out that the, this plan doesn't really reflect that. And I'm happy to update the exhibit to, you know, show that TE. But you, you might not really see that from this view. I can do like a ground level plan because, you know, the house might hang over where the garage fronted, you know. So you might be able to pull in kind of, you park the car in front of the house, but the house might actually hang over where that nose of the car would be, you know, maybe balcony or something. But, but I can do like a ground level, you know, ground plane, plan, so you can see exactly where that garage ends and where the sidewalk is. So anyway, that's, so basically, we agree with the TEs. I think one of the TEs was a zero foot internal setbacks, but I'm happy to clarify that in MDS, so.
Okay, and I, and I did ask, I communicated with staff on, on that item to get some clarity on what, what the intent was on internal setbacks, maybe zero feet or as required by building code, which ultimately would, would still require a six foot separation. So in fact, I think they were trying to give you some flexibility, as you noted. I was more wanting to ensure that it was single family detached, that there wasn't a way that that could turn into something else. And so if you are, basically, we can keep TE2 as written and allow zero or as required by building code. If you'd prefer to have that flexibility, if you were going to put one on a lot line and set one further or something like that.
Sure, I, yeah, I mean, this is, we're pretty sure about what we want to do here, so that's not really a detriment, but, and to give you some background too, I think at one point we had like a zero foot law line so that we could have a house on a property line, have five foot separation and then, but the city was pretty adamant that if it's on the property line, even if in the spud we say that there has to be a five foot separation between the buildings, that if it's on a property line, you can't have windows in it, which makes, you know, which makes sense. So that's why we've shifted to having six foot between the buildings and having the property line right in the middle, so.
Okay.
I'll just agree to the TE then, maybe. That'll keep it the simplest and whatever you guys prefer.
I'm, I'm comfortable with that as, as written. And, um, the, and I understood on the 18 foot setback, that doesn't necessarily have to apply to the roof, so you're, you're fine on that. The one thing that I believe, and I like the solution on the 10 foot easement on the back, it's not a panhandle lot, it's, you can get your sewer and serve all three properties. There was a, this mention of utilities and. Yeah, I think maybe we should hear from staff on, on the water line.
Yeah, that's in Seagrad's Utilities Department. I just want to clarify something, is that the two water lines running down North College Avenue are two inch diameter lines and so we will not allow connection to them. So in order to serve water to this, to these three houses, a water line extension is required along College Avenue or a private easement for their service lines on the front side of the property would be required.
And you're prepared to comply?
I don't know if that changes any, does that change anything in the spud language and that's something that we can accommodate? Like you're mentioning with like an easement in front or with the extension? Extension would be outside of that anyways, so.
Yeah, no, it doesn't change anything in the spud. It's just a utility requirement to be able to move forward to have water, water connection.
Okay, I appreciate that. So I'll work with my civil engineer on that.
On that, okay.
Can we, before we vote, let's get the, the TEs down, so if we're amending some of these existing TEs, let's make sure we're clear about where we are on that.
I, I think as we're, I think as we've, we've come full circle and TE1, garage is facing College Avenue shall be set back at least 18 feet from back of sidewalk.
Okay.
Stays as is. TE2, internal setbacks maybe zero feet or as required by building code is okay to remain.
We're okay with that.
Yeah, basically just accept the TEs as listed by the staff report.
Which will still, you know, result in six foot separation between each.
Each house, okay.
Because building code requires.
Same thing.
Yeah.
So if there's no one.
There's no one signed up to speak.
Okay.
Are there any other questions from commissioners also? But go ahead, Commissioner Govine, sorry.
Uh, if no one else has anything, then I'll move to recommend approval to council, SPOD 1515.
Commissioner Govine moves to recommend approval of SPOD 1515 to city council. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Claire. Please cast your votes.
All right, appreciate it.
Thank you. We're now in line for item 11.
This is SPOD 1525, application to rezone 12323 South Pennsylvania Avenue from R1.
Uh, good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive here on behalf of the applicant. The application before you is for an SPOD that would allow limited commercial development along South Pennsylvania Avenue. We have included uses that we think are appropriate, given their proximity to residential and accounting for everything else happening along South Penn. There are a handful of TEs. I do want to talk about them. We do agree with TE1. TE2 needs to be modified. There was an error. What it's asking for is call boxes 150 feet away from the west and south. So we agree to TE, but it should have said west, because of course the east is Pennsylvania Avenue. The west is where the neighborhood is. And I talked to Sarah and she agreed with that. And then on TE3, we're fine with the two signs. We'd ask for 12 foot in height. If, if you look at. If you look at what we're, what we have north of, oh, there it is on, thank you. There's some signage in this area that's, that's fairly tall, so two 12 foot signs that are monument, we think will, will fit in and, and still allow us to have the occupants of the buildings properly identified. We agree to four and on five, we'd ask for a 15 foot landscape buffer. Code is a five foot landscape buffer. 15 is still, I think, a good amount of landscaping and I've talked to, to Sarah. She didn't seem to indicate any issues with that, so we're still going to give 15 foot of landscape buffer, whereas under the code, it's 15 foot setback, but five foot of landscape. We actually think we're giving more landscaping buffer than you would expect to see. That's an old site plan. We have a new site plan that's been refined. There it is. So with that, happy to answer any questions and clarify those TEs if they were confusing.
Thank you. This is in Ward 5, of course.
I did meet with councilman immediately before this when his IT was getting set up.
Well, you know.
Oh, there he is.
He's gracing us with his presence today. Any, I, I don't believe we have anyone signed up to speak, whether neighbors intending to speak, that maybe needed to fill out the form. I don't think I have any issues here.
I have a question about the changes. What did you say? You said rather than the 20 foot that's recommended, you only want the 15 foot landscape buffer?
Yes.
You said because what is currently required?
So the typical landscape code is a five foot landscape buffer, but a 15 foot setback. What we're saying is we'll make all 15 feet landscaped.
Okay, but the recommendation was 20 and the difference is because currently it's residential and you're wanting commercial, so why not just go with what the staff had recommended of 20, 20 instead of 15? Where are we?
Yeah, so the way that the site is designed, we can't get the buildings in there if we went 20. Again, it's still three times what the commercial code would require next to residential at 15.
And the 12 foot monument, does that not become a problem with visual, with people trying to turn in and turn out? You can't see a big monument sign. Is that not a problem with visual?
No, we can't be in the right of way. We have to be set out from the right of way for that exact reason.
Okay.
You can't block site triangles or rights of way. So if you look at where the signs are kind of sketched in there, you see them on the site plan, they're set back far enough.
Thoughts on the sign?
I don't, I don't have any problem with the 12 foot. I'm sure Commissioner Powers, she can take a hard stance on the eight. But I, I really don't, on this corridor, I don't have a problem.
But say you're talking about South Penn, I would think there's plenty of tall signs.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's why I brought that exhibit, just to kind of give you a flair, you know, if this was an area that just didn't have signs, but when you have sign competition, an eight foot sign would just be, because those are more than 12.
Yeah.
So we're still going to be less than what you see there. So it's going to be 12 by eight instead of eight by 12, something like that? You're going to go tall instead of wide or something? I'm surprised you don't need more than 100 square feet if you're...
I mean, we're happy to take more square feet.
No, we'll leave it at 100. It's tall and skinny. I actually like it better for the visual anyway, if at least then it's skinny, as opposed to 12-foot tall and wide.
Well, so to be a monument, it doesn't have to be the same shape all the way up. It just... The base has to be measured a certain... So like the Dollar General, that might even be considered a monument sign, so it doesn't have to be a perfect, like, rectangle.
That's fine.
I think I always assumed that it was, honestly. So, you know, that's good for me to learn here.
We do have a sign expert in the room.
This is true. Councilman Hinkle is an expert. Any other questions, comments? Are we in agreement with the amendments to the TEs? Any comments from staff on those proposed amendments to the TEs? You're in support? Or neutral?
Well, Sarah, what was the... Do you know what the height is by code right now for the signs? I can't remember.
I'm so sorry. What's the question?
What is the height right now? This is the standard height for the sign code?
For C3?
For C3, yeah.
It depends on your frontage.
It's up to 50, depending on how much frontage you have.
They could probably get up to 20 on a site like this.
Okay. So it's still substantially below that, so...
Yeah. Okay. David, could you give us the amendments to the TEs?
So we agreed to one. On two, we need to change the word east to west. Three, modify it from eight to 12 feet. We agree to four, and fifteen... Excuse me. Five, 15 from 20 feet.
Okay. Where are we, commissioners?
I'll move to recommend approval to City Council, item SPOD 1525, subject to the amended technical evaluations as read to the record by the applicant.
Excuse me. Commissioner Clare has moved to recommend approval of SPOD 1525 to City Council, with the amended technical evaluations as read into the record by the applicant. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Noble. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Thank you. We're now in line for item 12.
This is SPOD 1530, application to rezone 9,500 Classon Boulevard from R1.
Is there an applicant present?
My name is Claude Hall, and we're here to change the zoning on a daycare center, and we want to change it to a catering business. And we've agreed to follow the SPUD 1530 simplified plan, so that was my instructions for the last... The last time here, so do you have any questions?
Email conversation.
I'm sorry, ma'am. Could you come to the microphone, please, so we can... We do have an audience at home. My wife would love to hear what you have to say, and please give us your name for the record.
This is Claude Hall. He's the owner of the building. I'm his real estate agent, Deborah O'Toole. And we've been in conversations with Thad Johnson and Curtis Liggins. Oh, are you Thad? Well, I was wondering what you looked like. Anyway, so you're aware of what we're doing here. Okay. So why don't you take it from here, then? Okay. So the buyer, we have a contract on the property, and it's contingent upon him getting approved to zone who... What was it? R...
To the SPUD.
To the SPUD. To the SPUD, because he's got a catering service. It's not a restaurant. It's not a cafe. It's just a catering service. And evidently, he's sent the information to Thad, and they've been kind of conversing back and forth.
Go ahead.
So it's not a daycare? It's not...
It used to be a daycare.
Former daycare. Now to be catering. Got it?
This is... So anything else?
Pardon me?
Anything else from you all before we make any comments or questions?
No. I think everything's in writing, in an email to Thad and to Curtis, so... Which is all your zoning codes and all that stuff.
I think, to start, this is in Ward 7. I... This is an unusual area. I was actually... I was actually kind of surprised when I saw this was in Ward 7. I said, Classon Boulevard being in Ward 7? But it's a weird... That weird curve in this area. So I know it's kind of an unusual spot around Britain. So it makes sense to me that we would have some alternative uses. I think my... So long as we provided sufficient protection as far as the uses for the neighbors, I think that's the only question for me, and it appears so. The only thing that I... That maybe there's an issue is participant recreation, but this is all limited to indoor uses. So that'd be my only other issue for this. I mean, it's off of a major street of Classon, so... And it's an existing structure.
Yeah.
So I don't have any other objections. Other thoughts? I can't make a motion. We have no one signed up to speak.
Mr. Chairman, I will move to recommend approval of SPOD 1530 to City Council.
Commissioner Clare has moved to recommend approval of SPOD 1530 to City Council. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Gauvain. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe we are at the end of our part of the agenda requiring items requiring separate vote. We are now in line for additional items. There are none. Communications and reports. Planning Commission committees. Don't believe there are any reports. Planning Commission members. Commissioner Clare.
The item that we, you know, heard earlier and ultimately recommended denial of, that was a really tough one, because, you know, as the applicant mentioned that they're trying to make this better, but I just... With an application in front of me that was going to still be detrimental to the neighbors, I couldn't vote in good conscience for that. And I mean, ultimately, when I think about it, and I asked staff when PUD, I think it was 1411, the residential to the west was approved, that was back in 2011, I was like, "Look at that. That's actually just a bad spot for a neighbor."
It is.
I mean, and I don't know at that time if they still had the... If there were plans in place for the Kilpatrick there. But I mean, this, you know, of course, it's easy to talk about hindsight, but this seems to be all industrial and commercial use, and it's just a bad place for that neighborhood. And I feel bad for the neighbors, but also the applicant as well, because, again, it's zone. They could go in there and do what they want to do. But at the same time, I think there's the opportunity to be a good neighbor. So that was a tough one.
I think as far as my own comments on that same issue is, I think a lot of times, a harsh reality of the work that we are doing is that at times, we're choosing between the lesser of evils. And so I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Clare. And so for me, it's, all right, what's the maximum we can get to to protect those neighbors? And it's just... It's very difficult. But luckily, the City Council's going to have another chance to take a shot at it. I think I still question whether denial is actually a worse outcome for neighbors, and that was my hesitation. But I also knew we needed to be unanimous, so I was prepared to go with what was going to take for us to be able to move this forward. But sometimes, we have a difficult job, and that's another example of that, of just having to deal with that. So appreciate everyone's patience, and certainly, you know, the participation of the developer as well, so... Commissioner Gauvain?
Nope, nothing.
Commissioner Noble?
Nope.
Commissioner LaForge?
Nope.
Planning Department?
Just one thing. Because we're down to commissioners, and Commissioner Pennington will not be able to attend on the 25th, it's been proposed that we move the study session. So I just wanted to get commissioners' take on that. It was originally scheduled for, I think, 11:00 AM, kind of the standard time on the 25th. We can move that down the road a month or two and just kind of figure that out via email, if that's...
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Makes sense.
All right. We'll do that. That's all I have.
Excellent. Municipal Counsel's Office. No comment. Citizens to be heard. All right. Other business? Seeing as we've reached the end of our agenda, we are adjourned.